This time, I'd like to call the meeting to order Monday, March 14th, 2022. And I'll ask Commissioner Mendenhall to lead us in our invocation.
Join me. Praise. Almighty gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and ask for your guidance and your wisdom. Father, we thank you for each and every person that came out to this meeting tonight, and we ask for them to have safe travels home. And Lord, for all of this watching on livestream, we ask that you bless them, and Father, preaching every person here, we ask that you bless their families and go and guide them. Now, all of these things, we ask in our precious name, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. This time, I'll need to approve the agenda. Is there any additions, corrections, or anything that we need to change about the agenda? Okay, here are none that I'll need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Second item on the agenda is the public comment time. Each speaker has four minutes for public comment. And then when you want to call your name, if you'll come to the podium, use that mic and just say your name and address, please. And the first person signed up is Dwayne Gildwell. Sorry if I mess your name up.
I think I was. I just want to speak on behalf of all the hound owners, hunters, Stokes County. I don't think this tether law is a good idea. I'm personally speaking for the coon hunters, but we have a lot of bear hunters, rabbit hunters. We have our dogs tied. We're up to standards on what's there now. I don't see why. You can't base all of our stuff on what one individual did. If a dog's being abused, I'm all for getting. But y'all, when y'all vote on this, please think about, there's going to be a lot of dogs done away with or turned loose, in my opinion. And just don't base it on what y'all saw in that video, because everybody's got a dog tied. Don't treat it that way. I mean, anybody's weapon can come by my house, see mine at any time. Just y'all keep that in mind.
Thank you. All right. Mike Bertrand. Sorry.
I'm not used to this public speaking, that's for sure. But I coon hunt, I squirrel hunt, I have squirrel dog, I've got a couple coon dogs. I'm not exactly sure what I was just found out about this Saturday night when Dwayne told me at the Coon Club over there. I was master hounds over there. And as far as no tethering a dog, I have kennels. I have one dog right now that I just picked up here a while back. She's skittish, as anything can be. I'm getting ready to tie her out, because you have more interaction with your dog when they're on a chain. They stay more active. My dogs that are in the kennel, they get to be lazy. They just lay there, their nails grow out. It's unbelievable. You have to keep them trimmed all the time. As far as going to the vets, a lot of times, you're not going to see a lot of us hunters with dogs go to the vets, because we've got our medicines, we've got antibiotics, we've got everything we need usually, except for rabies shots or if something seriously happens to the dog. I don't know what this tethering rule is coming from or anything, but I've been coon hunting. I'm 69 years old. I've been coon hunting, dog hunting, all my life. And I've never had a problem with my dogs. They stay a lot more active on the chain than they do in a lot. That's a fact. I don't care what any statistics are saying for somewhere else or something, but that's a fact. The dogs stay a lot more active. I go out there to feed them unless they're hungry or wanting something to eat, which they always are hungry. They, you know, they're a lot more active on a chain than they are in a lot. In a lot, they'll just lay there. They don't care whether you're in there or not. They don't care about nothing. They just lay there. When on a chain, they see a leaf blowing or something, they get more active, they stay more exercised. And dogs that I'm not really hunting a whole lot, I keep them on a chain, because they stay more active on a chain, and they keep their health up better. And that's just a fact. And that's coming from probably over 50 years of dealing with dogs. And I don't know what else to say about it, but as far as tethering a dog, I don't see a problem. We have all, I don't know anybody that don't, that ties their dogs out, that don't have swivels on both ends where the chain don't get tangled up. And like I said, your dog comes up and greets you more, you're more interactive with your dog on a chain than you is in a kennel. I know you can come to my house right now, walk up my kennels and dogs that are in it, they're not even going to come up there. They're just, if they're laying down there in the sun, they're going to lay there, they ain't going to move. On a chain, they're going to come out and greet you, you have interaction with them, you pet them a lot more. And I don't know what else to say about it. Like I said, I'm not a good speaker, I'm not used to talking in public, so hopefully my four minutes are up, because I've run out of words.
Thank you. The next person is Jennifer Wall.
Hey, I think this will work. Jennifer Wall, 1330 Brimsgrove Road, Pinnacle, North Carolina. I'm Kathleen's friend, Kathleen Edwards. She's been here to speak to y'all. I think she had read what Candace Loy had wrote that she's proposing. She's just asking that y'all hold on and let it be, let her look over. There's a lot of errors and stuff. And so that's why I came tonight for Kathleen, she couldn't be here. But as far as what I get to see on a day-to-day basis delivering packages, I work for FedEx Express. This town, I lived in Forsyth County for 18 years, I lived in Davie County 25 years. And the standards, it may not be these guys that have coon dogs, or, you know, that's more of like a sport or whatever. That's not what I see on a day-to-day basis. I see dogs, they have no water, they have no food, no shelter. And when you try to, when I take a picture and I report it, or somebody reports it for me, nothing's done about it. There's only two times that I know that something's been done. And a dog has feelings. People may not, don't think that they do, but they have feelings. And I see a lot delivering, and a lot of dogs are just put like in a backyard and forgot about. There's a lot of dogs that, the only reason a person has them is, I think they're drug dealers, and that's their, you know, that's their security, for the dog to bark. So that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have Anthony Smith.
Hey, how y'all doing? I'm a coon hunter. I live in Germantown off, well, number eight, right there at the BP. I've had people during the year call and talk to the police and everything else about my dogs being on chains. But the reason is because I'm so close to the road, and see, they don't think that nobody interacts with the dogs. But see, I run these dogs probably six hours a night. They never come by nighttime and look at my house or nothing like that. I got people posting online, and I've had, I mean, every one of them's almost like up to date on shots. Ain't neither one of them skinny. All of them's got water all the time. My kids is out there playing with them all the time. And see, the thing about a chain, if you've got puppies or anything like that, then you see dogs that's walking around and pulling on, like pulling people down and like trying to get off and stuff like that. Well, it helps them learn how to like walk on a leash, like if you've got show dogs for coon hunting. It just shows them to operate a whole lot better. And, let's see. And it kind of helps their temper, because if you put them in a lot, and then they sit there in a cage, it's just like somebody in jail, you know what I'm saying? They ain't got no free spot to go, except for that kennel. They behind that bar all the time. And then if you've got really good coon dogs, and they're active all the time, then if like, you put them in a kennel, these dogs is running and treeing coons all night long, and they'll sit there and they'll try to climb the trees. So they used to climbing, they used to barking, stuff like that. So if you put them dogs in a kennel, it don't matter if you put them in like, like a top on them or anything, them dogs is going to climb out, because they're coon dogs. That's what they're meant to do, they're meant to hunt. So the chain helps from keeping the dogs in the yard and not going nowhere. I mean, so you don't lose a dog. So I vote against it. I mean, I'm good friends with BLD Harp, I hunt on all his, all his property and stuff. My dad is Wolf, he works for BLD Harp, most of his yards. We've known him for 40 years. So, I mean, y'all, he can vouch on my part that my dogs and everything is fine. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. There's no one else signed up for public comments, so we're going to move on to the conflict of, or the comments of commissioners. I'll start down here with Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome, everybody. It's good to see a big crowd out here tonight. Just like to ask everybody to keep the folks in Ukraine in your prayers and all the bad things that are going on in that part of the world. It really makes us take things for granted over here about how well we've got it, but those people are really suffering, and they need our prayers. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right. Commissioner Nicholson.
Madam Chair. Good to see everybody. Hope you had a time here well spent, and hope you have safe travels back home. So let.
Commissioner Mendenhall.
I got my name right. Got my name right. Good to see everybody here tonight. It is always a pleasure to see people from all of this county come out to our meetings. And you know, it just shows me that you do care about what is going on in your county, and that is very important to me. And, you know, I think that each one of our commissioners, they ran to represent the constituents. And I just want to say that it's an honor to work for you, and I appreciate you coming out, and I hope you have safe travels home. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Again, it's great to see everybody. It's good seeing the good Lord is blessed, it's been a beautiful day, and the wind ain't blowing down in my ear. As Commissioner Mendenhall said, it's great to see people get involved. I value people's opinion, what they got to say about what goes on in these meetings, and it's just great for you to have your input in it. And I take that into consideration anytime I think about something, make a decision to vote on something. I just thank y'all for being here.
And I'd like to again reiterate what they said, and thank everyone for being here and watching online. Speaking of those high winds, I would like to really thank all of the fire departments that showed up at my daughter's when the field behind her house caught on fire because of the winds blowing down the power pole, and we had some Sora Town, and South Stokes, and King, and Roehall, all out there, kind of a scary time. With gas prices what they are, these people, a lot of them are volunteers and using their own gas and stuff to come out to all these calls and everything. I really appreciate that. And again, thank you all for coming and participating today. Shane.
Welcome to everybody here. It's nice to see a large crowd here, and thanks to all the public comments that we received. And if you're always here in this office, if you ever have things we can help you with, always reach out to us. I want to make a note that we've got a South Stokes Civics group here this evening. Four young ladies are here from Ms. Boo's civics class at South Stokes. One of those is my daughter Addie. And her friends Abby, Abby, and Kendall. So they're all here, and they're going to take a little picture with you guys after the meeting's over for proof that they came tonight. Thank you, and welcome.
All right. The conflict of interest statement. Before moving any further, does any board member have a conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda for tonight, or one that could be perceived as a conflict of interest?
I have a question for our attorney, Madam Chair.
All right.
Under the budget amendments, T.A., Budget Amendment 78, appropriate funds from the New School Forsyth Tech Fund for the security at Community College where I'm on the Board of Trustees at Forsyth Tech, is that considered a conflict or not?
In my opinion, it is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes, the budget amendments, the tax office items for approval, and the release of closed session minutes. Are there any questions about any of those items?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have one question, Madam Chair. We had a budget amendment there for doing a repair at Pine Hall from vandalism. Did they do anything significant out there? Does anybody know, happen to know?
I think it was just the door that you go into. So I think the locking mechanism is broken.
Like somebody tried to break in or something? Okay. Okay, good. That's all I need to know.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So it takes us to the discussion agenda, and the first item is the animal control revision request, ordinance revision. Do you have that, Shana?
Well, I have got the revisions that were submitted by the Animal Control Advisory Board. And then, of course, Candace Loy is here as well, and she's the chair of that board. So if you have other questions, she'll be here to answer those. So what we've, in front of you is the original language that's currently in our ordinance and then the suggested language that they're proposing. There are two separate items here, so whatever you decide to do, I'd like to look at those as separate items.
All right.
The tethering ordinance is one subject, of course. If you have questions on that, let us know about that, and Candace can answer some of those as well. The other portion is the language change of the ordinance to include animal welfare. You know, in July, we took those departments apart and made an animal welfare division and also kept our animal control. But our ordinance doesn't address animal welfare, and so we need to include them in our ordinance. So this language that we have on here, this proposed language, would fix that. So I would like you to consider treating that as a separate item of the tethering, whatever you decide to move on.
Let's do that one first.
So.
First, we're going to look at the language change of the ordinance to include the animal welfare division.
It just basically gives both parties the right to enforce the ordinance.
Okay.
And one thing, in conversation with the folks at the animal welfare division, they're a very small group through the sheriff's office, and they do want to note that if a tethering ordinance is amended, that we'd have to have a meeting between us and the animal control office to look at kind of redistributing some of those duties that we pulled apart from them, because the animal welfare office and the sheriff's office would not be able to handle any more volume as far as ordinance enforcement. It would have to look at shifting some of those duties back to animal control, so it would generate some changes in that department. But this ordinance request on the language still needs to be done either way, so both have the full ability to enforce the entirety of the ordinance. We don't have that now.
Okay. So let me make sure that we are, so the animal control department and the animal welfare division, that's two separate entities. The animal welfare division is under the sheriff's department.
Correct.
Okay. And that includes the two officers.
Two officers.
Okay. And so then the animal control department consists of how many people that?
Four employees.
Four employees, but how many of those enforce?
Three officers.
Three officers. But they don't have, what's, I know.
Scotty is here with animal control.
What's the difference, so, and who can enforce what? I guess is my question.
Well, animal control just cannot do criminal cases, criminal investigations. They don't have, they're not, you know, sworn officers, anything like that. So they can do those kind of, they can do rabies, they can pick up strays, they can do all those other things within the ordinance. They just, when it becomes a criminal case, then it would flow into the animal welfare division. That's how it always worked before anyway, even when we didn't have two separate units, it went to the sheriff's office. Now, we just have a defined department for that. But they are currently doing all of the enforcement, and that would have to change if there's more added to them as far as the tethering ordinance.
Can they, can they give out tickets and things?
Yeah. Yeah. They can do violations, citations.
They can do citations. Okay. Okay.
And I know this whole group's on the back row, so if I'm saying something that's not true, and your department's, speak up. But I think we're on the right page with that, on what you can and can't do.
Okay. All right. So the language that we're looking to change in the ordinance is just to define all of that.
Before in the ordinance, when you look at the definitions, we only define the animal control officer, and that was designed, the person designated by the Stokes County Board of Commissioners to enforce the ordinance and carry out other duties with respect to animal control is, may be designated by the board. We're asking to take that out and add in the Stokes County Animal Control Department consisting of Animal Shelter Division and Animal Welfare Division. Then if you read on down all that definition defining what those two are, that way we cover everybody in one definition.
It says the two divisions shall have the full ability to enforce the entirety of this ordinance. So they have equal ability to enforce whatever is decided?
Yes. And T.A.'s looked over that new language and is okay with that as well.
Does any board members have any questions about the language of the, because no matter what we do with the tethering, we need to fix this.
We needed to fix this when we divided those departments.
Okay.
So this is totally separate from the ten?
Totally, totally separate.
This is only a language change for this.
Correct. Nothing about the tether.
I do want to know, I think I saw Eric calling back there. Eric, are you here?
Yep. He's here.
Eric, how many do you have? How many do you have in your department, sheriff's department? It is?
Animal welfare consists of two officers.
Just two. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Okay. Any other questions about this? Okay. If you'll bring this back to us for action, we can change this language.
We'll do that in a separate item on action. Have your next speaker.
And then the next item is the tethering change, the proposed updated tethering ordinance that's proposed.
Correct. So if you've had time to look over that and what was presented to you at the last meeting, this is a recommendation from the Animal Control Advisory Board on updating the tethering. And if I understand correctly, it's in line with what's done in Forsyth County as far as in their ordinance. Does anybody have any specific questions on that one? Like I said, with that one is, you know, if that, if something was changed in the ordinance to this degree, it would generate, we would have to have a pretty good discussion with animal control and animal welfare on getting those duties reassigned, making sure everybody could handle what they were tasked with.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry.
Shana, compared to what we got now, now you said what we actually have in place now is what Forsyth County pretty much has in place too?
No.
No. No, no, what's being proposed is pretty much what Forsyth County has in place.
Okay. So the one being proposed is what Forsyth County has. As far as other counties like ours, Surrey, Rockingham, have we seen theirs, is theirs kind of comparable to what we have now?
I'll ask Candace if she speaks to that. Does?
Not as well, not as good, not as thorough.
Okay. Is it more in line with ours, Surrey, or?
With what we currently have.
Yeah.
So we have more in place than Surrey, is that what you're saying, at this time?
I could get you a copy of, like Surrey and those counties to look at.
I would like to have a copy, Shannon, and also, Madam Chair. I have done some research, and quite a bit of due diligence on this, because I have had, and I gladly take all my calls, and I've had several calls on this since the last meeting. And where it says animals, it's item G. Item G on our new proposal, I think, it says animals 51 pounds or more must have a minimum of 200 square feet per animal, per kennel. And really, I got thinking about that, so I made a call to the sheriff's department. And do you know how many, this is going to be a jeopardy show right here for my commissioners. Do any of the commissioners know how many square feet an inmate in the jail has?
I'm going to say less than that.
Everybody.
I knew you wouldn't have the answers. So really, I'm putting them on the spot to everybody watching livestream, I just put this on them.
Jeopardy.
Right now, and they had no, but does anybody want to take a guess?
Probably 48 square feet.
73 square feet.
I said 64.
Each inmate has 73 square feet in the jail. And an animal 51 pounds or saying here or more must have a minimum of 200 square feet. So I just wanted to give everybody in this audience and the people watching a comparative analysis of what's in here in item G versus the sheriff in the jail and an inmate in the jail. They have 70, it's a minimum of 73 square feet. I'll turn that out there, Madam Chair.
I'm putting that right now.
Thank you. I'll have it right now.
Okay. So that's what's proposed in this new proposal.
Yeah. And the highlighted area, the, you can tell the print that's been highlighted at the top, the first couple pages, issue exists in ordinance.
Yeah. I need to get, there's three different attachments. I'm just trying to switch back and forth between the different attachments.
And I want to say that that's currently the closure sizes presented this year, that was approved last year.
That was my question.
That's part of the adequate housing that got updated, right?
Okay. Thank you, Candace. Thank you.
Okay. Great, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a lot of questions about this, and I want to do a lot more research before I agree to any, really, any changes to it. The, I think the goal of everybody here, all the dog owners, the folks who represent here, is to prevent the mistreatment of animals, and cruelty to animals, and all the bad things people do to animals. And I think everybody supports that, I know I certainly do. But I, what I'm trying to do is go through each one of these bullets on here, A through whatever it is, and ask questions like, are they enforceable, first of all? If it's not enforceable, and with a common sense kind of enforcement, then I don't think we should do it, or we should modify it to where it is. I think everybody gets upset when they see animals that are put on log chains and just tied, like maybe, like somebody said, used for guard dogs for drug houses, and the animals are not taken care of, and they're skinny, and they're sick, and all that. And so I think that's the objective of what we're trying to do here by having a tethering, having tethering restrictions. So I think we have, I think we're really going to have to go through this with a fine-toothed comb to answer those questions, and then make sure that we apply some common sense to this, first of all, about how it's enforced and everything, and that we do prevent the cruelty to the animal, to dogs and other animals in the county. That's just totally unacceptable. But defining what that is, is not a black and white thing to do. There's a lot of gray area. Like, for instance, I sort of knew it, but I got a call too from the coon hunter guys, and I know Jamie, I just, I watched Jamie's dog in a contest not too long ago at a farm show. These dogs are like, they are really treated well. They're working dogs, they're, a lot of them are really expensive, and I don't want an ordinance that really interferes at all with what coon hunters are doing with their coon hounds. The, so I think we've got to address that standpoint. There may be other groups that we shouldn't, shouldn't impact, because there, I don't think there's a problem there. They're, those dogs get treated better than people do sometimes, I think, and rightly so maybe. But, so I think we're going to need to go through this and kind of analyze it a little bit, like, for instance, just go to number B, it's a 10-foot length. Needs to be at least 10 foot. Well, I'm not sure where the 10 foot comes from, and why it's not 11, why it's not nine, or why it's not 20. There's, just bear with me as I kind of go through these things that I wrote down. Like I said, I don't think these heavy chains should ever be put on dogs, these log chains and tow chains and so forth. But a regular lightweight chain with the right kind of connectors and everything on the end of it, there's no problem with that. There's another question I had, is there's a thing in here about not tethering a dog that's under one year old. I'm not sure what the science is there, why that age, that particular age is selected or whatever. I'd like to get more information on that. I think we have to allow people who are, who are not mistreating the dogs to be able to temporarily tether them when they need to. to temporarily tether them when they need to. I agree with, with one of the comments that somebody made here earlier that if you restrict this enough, then people will just turn the dogs loose or do other things with them that may have a worse outcome than having them tethered properly. So it talks about having them tethered within a line of sight. Well, to me, that's a little confusing. You know, does that mean I have to be watching it all the time while the dog's tethered? Or does that mean if I can look out the window and see it? I think all these little, these little vague areas really need to be cleared up so that, so that we're doing things that make sense and not letting dogs be mistreated. I think there's no, nobody would have any problem with one bullet in here that says that they have to have adequate shelter, water, and food. That's like a no-brainer for whatever situation or kind of tethering anybody's doing. But then one of the things says that you can't tether it if there's a severe weather warning been issued. Well, I understand the intent of that, but is that really reasonable to, or how do you enforce something like that? I just, I would just like for us to, you know, gather more research, talk to more folks that are dog owners, and make sure that we have exceptions in here like for coon hunting dogs and these other exceptions that are in section F about sheep herding livestock at campsites and those kind of things. Make sure that those are all logical, easy things to spot. And then maybe try to, try to better define that one thing that we all are trying to avoid, and that's a dog that's tethered and not taken care of. And everybody in here has seen them around the county because they're out there, there's no doubt about that. And so that's, that's kind of the approach I want to take with this. I have a dog, I've said this before every time this came up, that was, had an embedded chain in her neck whenever we got her. And it had to be surgically removed and everything. And so that's like the extreme that we're trying to avoid and the kind of thing we're trying to prevent. But we need to do that in a reasonable way that doesn't impact the rights of these owners and people that use dogs for working dogs and hunting dogs and so forth, especially hunting dogs in about every category. So I want to study, I want to study what was proposed here and try to come up, along with the other commissioners, on a balanced approach that with a heavy dose hopefully of common sense in it so that we can prevent the cruelty to the animals, but at the same time not push it too far with telling people what they can and can't do with their animals. So that's where I stand.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Commissioner Nicholson.
Have we got a copy of our current one?
It's in, it's on there.
Number 1 to section 26.
First attachment, I think, is it, in the section, section 26.
It says current tethering ordinance.
Go ahead, somebody else has got some. It ain't like what I clicked on.
I just reiterate some of the comments that Commissioner Morris had about these hunting dogs and stuff. My son's had coon dogs in the climbing defense part, that gentleman said, I had them in the fence and they climbed it like a squirrel. And I had a beagle one time, he done the same thing. If he didn't climb out, he dug out. So, you know, the chain was the only way I could keep my coon dogs in my house, next to my house. If you unchain a coon dog, trust me, he's gone and you're going to be looking for it. And that's way with a lot of other dogs in the county. But I understand the concept of mistreating them, but I think we got to back up and re-look at this for the simple fact of some of these guys. Folks, I've seen people write a check for $10,000 for a coon dog. I have seen it with my own eyes. These are very expensive dogs and people look after these dogs. So as far as this tender law, this, this is going to hurt these guys because, you know, you're going to have a neighbor of the road up here that's got a dog chained up, he's got his dog chained up, they come over here and enforce it all here, then it going to come this coon dog guy that's got these high dog dogs. Now, I think we need to get in the middle here with this right here. And, you know, it's, it's not a good thing, I don't think, right now, and I'm like Commissioner Morris, I think it needs a lot of work done to it.
Okay. I'll say that I do agree with some of Commissioner Morris's points on this. There are some vague areas, and what we want to avoid is unintended consequences where we pass something that's so strict that it's hard to enforce, or that somebody gets caught in a situation where they're not mistreating their animal, they're training it, or they're doing something else otherwise, and they're not mistreating it. But it might have to be outside, it might have to be tethered like, like we were talking about with the swivel and that kind of thing for a short period of time. And, you know, I understand there are instances in this county of people who are mistreating their animals. And that's, you know, sickens me, just like the video that we watched was sickening. But not everybody who has an animal that could be outside for a short amount of time for whatever reason is mistreating their animal. Because not everybody's animal is, while it would be nice, in a world that, where everybody's animal was a pet that stayed indoors, that's just not reality. To walk where we live today in this, in a rural area and everything, people have and want dogs, but they can't keep them in the house for whatever reason. It might be allergies, it might be that they rent and the landlord won't let them keep an inside dog. So allowances have to be made for some of those things, for hunters who need to temporarily have a dog outside like that. At the same time, my advice on this would be this, for one thing that might help, is what we could do to change the ordinance is have stronger penalties for the people who are cruel to animals, who, if we're trying to prevent cruelty, one thing would be to make the fines greater, to, you know, give less time between the warnings and when we actually decide to give that citation to make them come to court, to make them hit their pocketbook where they might pay attention to what we're trying to do. And if, and if it's, if, not give them the option to surrender the animal if they don't have the money to pay these fines, if they're not going to take care of it. I think that we give them a lot of time, I think three days to get into compliance if, our current ordinance, but that might be too much time. I mean, I know there was a dog, of course, it was all over Facebook, this one instance of a dog outside in really cold weather. And if you give them three days and it's below zero, I mean, or below 32 degrees for three days in a row and that dog's not, you know, taken care of, then three days might be too much. And I think it does speak to an emergency situation where a dog can be taken, but, you know, maybe that's something we should look at to get people to comply with the, what the ordinance we already have in place. Is some stronger penalties and less time to comply or something would be one suggestion I would make. Commissioner Nicholson, did you find out, figure out what you?
Yeah, I mean, there is one thing I here agree with, like no person shall tether a chain or wire or other device an animal in such a manner that it does not allow the animal the full access to adequate food, water, or shelter. Now, I do agree with that because it kind of falls into the animal cruelty, and it looks like it's something that we currently don't have on there. One thing I strongly disagree with is like the keeping the eye on them. I see many good pet owners who leave their dog out in the open during the day and come home, you know, whether it work or something, I just don't, I can't agree with that. But that's all I have.
Anybody?
Just have a couple more comments, Madam Chair. First of all, I appreciate the Animal Advisory Committee putting this together to give us something to work with, because they're definitely trying to do the right thing, and we've got good people on there that are, that are doing that. A couple of other areas that confuse, that I want to get a little clarification on as we go through this process are the temperature thing. It's, it basically says, I think it's saying that you can't, if it's freezing, low freezing, you can't tether a dog, or if it's real hot, you can't. I think we have to clarify, I have a dog that sleeps in the bedroom with me part of the time, and other times he goes out at night. And I just let him choose whichever he wants to do. And it's like 19 or 18 degrees and he wants to go out and stay out all night. And I, you know, I get up in the middle of the night, call him, try to get him to come back in, he still wants to stay out there. So I like to understand, like, what's the science behind, or how do we better define what we mean when we're talking about the temperature? And I know a lot of dogs probably couldn't stand that, but some dogs like or are conditioned for that and they prefer it. So I'd like some clarification on that. Also, one thing that's not directly related to this is the, I think I mentioned it when this came up before, I'd like to re-look the idea of having an animal cruelty investigators in the county. Because right now, unless, a lot of this stuff's off the road, and the only way we're going to know about it is if somebody reports, reports it, and then our animal control folks go out and check it out. But if we could use an animal cruelty investigator to help us determine where the abuses are occurring and where they're not, then I think that might be part of the solution for this too, if we could look into that, maybe especially during this next budget cycle. That's all I have.
I'm going to, I'll probably finish this up for the commissioners. I think everybody has had a chance to speak. And we do have a good group on our advisory board. Candace, I've known her for 30-some years, and also some of the people other than Candace on the board. She lives probably a mile, half a mile from me. We're out in the country. If you've ever been to Flat Shores Road, I mean, where Candace lives, they have a humongous area where dogs could run, and I mean, if they were not chained or not in a kennel, I mean, she, they have a large area of acreage. Same thing applies at my house. My mom happens to own quite a bit of land. My father passed away of cancer seven years ago, but I'll say this, when I grew up as a young boy, my dad and all of our family, we were rabbit hunters. We had about seven or eight beagles, and my dad treated those beagles. Sometimes when I did something wrong and I got wore out, I think he'd treat too, his dogs, but he treated me sometimes. I want to tell you one thing, my dad was a good man, but he was firm. And if I did something wrong, he took care of it, and he took care of those beagles. But I'm going to say this, because Wayne made a point, and see, now I'm in a different situation. Did you say you saw somebody writing a $10,000 check?
Well, no.
Well, I got a teacup poodle in my house right now. It lives in the house, in the house. It has never set foot on the ground. Outside. Two years old. And I drove 16 hours for my wife to Louisiana to pick that animal up and drove 16 hours back home, and I would not tell this crowd how much I paid for that because my wife would shoot me. But she wanted it, and I dished out the money. So I've been on both ends. I've raised beagles from when they were puppies, and my daddy made sure I took care of them, and he made sure I took care of them the right way. And now I've got an animal that sleeps in our bed sometimes, depends on what time I go to bed. But my wife makes sure that I feed that pup. Well, she's two, Sophie's two years old now, and you better believe, I better have her food, and I better have her water, and I better have her taken care of when I get in that bed. Because otherwise, I might be out of bed and the dog be in the bed. So I've been on both ends here. And this is, this is not an easy, I'm going to tell you what, this is not an easy situation right here. Because I believe in taking care of animals. And the video that Candace showed last week, two weeks ago, was heart-wrenching because it brings out the tough emotions in anybody. But you know what? I always go back to one thing, Tony. I think you got to use common sense too. And common sense, if everybody remembers that, I'll tell you what. My dad was a tobacco farmer, and I grew up priming tobacco, and he worked at R.J. Reynolds 30 years. And he worked his behind off. But you know what he taught me? Sending me to college, sending me to Carolina wasn't the greatest thing he ever did for me. He taught me one thing, he said, "Son, that degree on that wall is not going to take you anywhere unless you've got common sense to go with it." And I believe that we need to really take a close look at this and try to use common sense. And it's, you know, you've heard four other commissioners bring up ideas, and they were all different. Each commissioner had different perspectives. And this is, this is not an easy policy to develop, and I don't think it's going to be where you can make every single person happy. But there is one thing that I will agree with everybody that said it, and that is animals should not be mistreated. You want an animal, then you ought to take care of it. That's just the way I like it. And I know, I appreciate all those gentlemen that came out and spoke tonight also. That's all I've got, Madam Chair, I'll close it out there.
So moving forward, I think we're going to need some more information and have this back on discussion for another meeting.
Thanks, thanks, I think we can get you some information together, and then if we could just move the language change on the departments.
All right.
Action would be nice for next time, just that one item.
All right, so we'll have more information and more discussion on this when we get some more information at the next meeting on discussion. But we will have for action the change in the language of the Animal Welfare Division or to separate that. All right. Moving forward, item B is the ESO funding budget amendment request. And we have someone from the Fire Marshal's office.
Atherton Jessup is here.
Okay. Sorry.
Good evening, thank you guys for having me. The reason we come before you tonight is I represent the Stokes County Fire Commission, also the Fire Rescue Association's the president. The predominant reporting system, I think you guys have got some letters in here from the chairman and also the secretary, but the reporting system the fire departments use has been bought out by another company, and it's sunset at the end of this year. And the reason that we're coming before you for a budget amendment is we're kind of constrained on time as far as implementing this new system. It has to be done by the end of the year, and also ESO being the new company is telling us we need to get ourselves in line with them so it doesn't delay things. So what we did, working with the association, and this stuff was significantly higher than what we've been used to paying for reporting software. So working through the association, we were able to do some group pricing. And just to kind of give you some rough figures, if every fire department in that county went to this on their own, not doing a group pricing, it was going to cost an initial startup of over $80,000. By doing this as a group, we're saving around $27,000 by going together and doing it as a group. And this does have a recurring cost. If it wasn't done as If it wasn't done as a group, it'd be a little over $65,000 every year annually. And by doing it as a group, we're able to save roughly $20,000 a year to the taxpayers. So that's why we're before you tonight is to hopefully move this forward with a group purchase for all the county fire departments. This also does include the Fire Marshal's Office. The Fire Marshal's Office is already using this system and it was able to bring some savings to that department as well. The EMS division has been using this system for the last probably over 10 years. We tried to get them some cost saving benefits, but because their system is completely different, they couldn't lump it in with ours. We did look at that trying to save money. I guess it's time for any questions, I can answer those.
All right, thank you. I'll start down here with Commissioner Morse. You have any questions?
Is this, the one you're going to is like the one everybody else is using? Is it standard kind of?
Yes, sir. ESO, they bought out the company we were using called Firehouse.
Okay.
And Danbury Fire Department, they've been on this system for a year or two already. And like I said, EMS has been using it for many years and a different variation. And then our office has been on it for a little over a year as far as, and it works great. It's a really good system.
Does it, does it have any functionality with other counties or does other counties have it around us too?
Some of the, we looked at different vendors, some of the other counties using different vendors. We kind of, the group decided to go with ESO due to EMS being already on it. Our office, the Fire Marshal's Office, the IT department's already familiar with how things work with it, so trying to keep things right and smooth.
Okay.
Trying to bring in a different system.
Okay, that makes sense. That's all I have, ma'am chair.
Okay.
I have no questions. It looks like they've already done their homework on this and presented it well, so thank you, Mr. Jessup.
I'm good.
Yeah, this is something we really need because this is how we send all our reports to Raleigh and Fire Marshal's Office, State Fire Marshal and all that, so it's something we've got to have.
Sounds good. Do you need this moved to action for this meeting or the next meeting?
We would love to have it this meeting if possible. If it can't be done, we understand, but we need to try to move it.
So the board to move it? Okay, we'll move it. That will be action item C.
There's a budget amendment on there in case you did move it and it would be number 83.
Okay.
Right, 83.
All right. We're going to move it to item C. Thank you.
I think you can sign for a minute.
The next item, yeah, you might as well stay, is the, right away. Don't go anywhere. The fireworks display at Bella Colonna Matcham.
It's pretty standard, normally when there's a fireworks display in the county that commissioners have to look over and approve that request. Don't really have a lot to elaborate on it. It's kind of a different fireworks show than we're normally used to. It's called a cold fireworks, so there's no projectiles. We had to do some research on it, reach out to the State Fire Marshal's Office because we never had that happen before. But everything's good to go and they, all they have to do is meet all the normal requirements for a normal fireworks show.
Okay, all right. Board members have any questions about this?
I really don't have any questions, so.
All right.
Not even going to bring up what I was going to.
Do we need to move this to action for tonight or can it be on?
It's on time, it's in.
Okay, all right, we'll have it on action for our next meeting then.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, the next item, the Assistant Finance Director Lisa Langford will present is the offer to purchase surplus tax property.
That's awful. Sorry. This is, I guess, JL Enterprises Incorporated, Lot 1, Bolton Hill Acres, offer for the sum of $38.75. And the upset bid process started on Thursday, February 17th and ended at 9:30 a.m., February 28th. No upset bids were received.
Okay.
And Glenda, she said she recommended accepting the offer from JLI Enterprises Incorporated.
Okay, do board members have any questions about this? Do you need it for next time on action? Would be all right?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have it on action at the next meeting. Thank you. The next item, it's also Lisa, is the refinancing of the Nancy Reynolds and our community college loan.
And this is a resolution that Julia had put together to lower the interest rate from 2.89 to 2.34.
Okay, all right.
Ask it now before they raise, am I going up now?
Yeah, what she said now.
Should we move that to action then?
I recommend we move that.
Okay, all right, that'll become item D on action.
We may lose thousands of dollars if we don't go ahead and move it.
Let's move it, okay. All right, we got that taken care of. And the next item is, the favor is the county, the courthouse security fees.
Yes, sir. As you know, on February 9th, an administrative order was filed to enhance the safety and security of the courthouse and I've attached a copy of that order to the agenda as well just for reference. The order has to be followed by anyone entering the courthouse at any time, no matter what time of day that is. There are some groups that, I guess that was sort of a thing that was not addressed when they were locked down essentially at first, but now that's starting to come up and the courthouse is occasionally used by private groups and those groups would need to coordinate with the sheriff's office to provide security for those events at their own expense. The sheriff's office, normal rate for providing this service to outside parties is $30 per hour for each deputy. I spoke with Sheriff Lemmons and he said he would need a minimum of two deputies at the functions of the courthouse just to be sure if anybody's using that for a private event. I did speak with Judge Puckett and she has asked that one thing that they do hold in the courthouse at night once a month generally is teen court and she'd like for that to remain in the courthouse with the county continuing to provide security for that and not that being considered an outside event. We just wanted to bring this before you because this is something totally different that we've ever done before, there's never been a need for it in the past because there was no real security there for events. So we wanted to get an official approval from the board of commissioners on this as well as to approve that rate for the sheriff's office to charge for those private events.
All right. Board members have questions about this? Who wants to start?
I don't really have any questions. It's, to me, it's almost self-explanatory. I'm good with it. It's just like the schools, the schools when they have outside events. I mean, you know, like James Booth Group, I think, which is soil and water, you know, they have their big event and it's always, I know during my seven years when I was principal at North Stokes, we hosted it four times. You know, as you know, being on the board, you just have a form they fill out and they pay so much money to use the school. I feel the same way with this. It should be no problem as long as the group's willing to pay the amount requested by the sheriff's department.
All right.
All I have.
Ma'am chair, I just want to say it's said that we've had to come to this, but unfortunately due to events happening around in the country, I see we have no choice on this, I'm fine with it.
All right, Mr. Morse?
I think we just, we'd had some discussion about not having any events in the courthouse, which is kind of a separate issue except for things related to the court system, but I'm good with this as long as we're going to continue to have private stuff in there.
Right, and I'm good with it too. I think it's reasonable. There's not that many outside groups that use it, but there is a definite lack of good places to hold things for groups. And right now, I know the ones that use it, I don't think have other alternatives in place, so definitely I feel like, you know, we need to provide them the opportunity to keep using it at least for the time being until, unless something else happens and they decide to change where they're meeting or whatever, but I think it's reasonable. And I think, you know, the taxpayers paid for all this, it's their property just as well as, say it belongs to the county, but it belongs to the people. So I don't want to put anything too encumbering on anybody that would cause them to not be able to utilize when needed, so. But I think this security measures, I'm fine with and the fees are reasonable. Do we want to just have this on the next agenda?
If you're okay with it, if you don't mind them move it to action, that way if anything's held between now and you meet again, they can go ahead and enact this policy. Otherwise, I don't think there's anything planned in there in the next couple of weeks, but if something does come up, they can go ahead and be prepared. Just wanted to go ahead and get that passed as soon as we could.
All right.
Be able to use it.
Well, we've added a lot to action, why don't we just hold this till the, you want to hold it?
I prefer holding.
Okay.
So if something else comes up that's a private event, do you want them just to?
I'm fine with it.
I don't know, I don't know what's coming up between now and the 28th when you meet again, since they ask for that to be done.
I'm fine with it, ma'am chair.
Well, you think there's, I mean, anybody know of any other events that might be held there before the 28th?
What's going to happen if one does come up?
They'll have to just provide security at the taxpayers' cost.
At the taxpayers' cost.
There'd be no agreement in place if it really wouldn't happen, son.
Well, we may should move it to action then, just so the fees can be charged. All right, I'm going to move this to action. Item E is just the fees, that's all we're really looking at, that's all this pertains to, for outside groups, that way they can keep using it.
Some of them already, I know there was a group of the fire service uses it, I think they're going to start using our third floor here in place of that. So there's some solutions for some of those groups to do something different.
Okay, all right, so that becomes item E.
Is it really just affected teen court, is that correct?
There are some other private groups that use it that would have to pay the fee, but teen court would not pay to use it because that's not being considered.
Okay, all right, moving on, item G is the River Street contract and I think you have the updated contract. You want to take a minute to look over it with River Street for the new broadband.
Ty drafted this kind of in accordance with the RFP and with the response to the RFP. There was one copy that was sent out first, but it didn't address, as Chair Cox had pointed out in there about the using the ARPA funds for our county match to that. So that was updated to change in the second draft that you received. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. We sent a copy to River Street and I have not heard back yet from them, but we just sent it today because we just received the contract today.
Okay.
Ma'am chair, I read over this earlier. I do have one question.
Go ahead.
I'd like to get clarification.
All right.
I think it's very important that we get specifics on this one and not generalization and that's item number 12.
Okay.
Where it says, "River Street Network shall at all times maintain audible records, documents, and papers for inspection by authorized Stokes representations." Who are authorized Stokes representations?
Okay.
I want to know, in other words, if I walked over there and I wanted to audit something, am I authorized Stokes representative?
That's a good question. Can you answer that, Ty?
Well, that's something that the board would have to authorize.
Right, exactly.
More than authorized representative.
And it's not, it's not in here right now, it's just, that's a general statement.
That was taken from the RFP. If that was required.
But I think we need it to be specific.
You need to specify who the representative is.
Yes, thank you.
I think it would be county manager or the commissioners, the board.
I think any active county commissioner, county manager.
County attorney.
County attorney.
We need to specify that then, change, make that change.
Is it specifically stated in that language?
Yeah, we can put it in here. Did the authorized representatives?
Okay.
I was good with everything but that. I want to make sure we knew exactly who had the right to go do that.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
County manager, county attorney.
And any active county commissioner.
Any commissioner.
Did you also, or would you also need to fix it where you could designate somebody else if you needed to for some specific purpose to do the same thing?
Yeah, or such other.
Or designated by?
It may be that thing.
By the board, okay.
Okay.
Well, you may have a technical person or something that needs to be tasked to do that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I want to go back and appoint someone that was on that committee.
Is there any other questions about the contracts? If not, then we just need to send it to them or wait to hear back from them.
We sent it to them today and we've not heard back yet from them.
Okay, okay. We'll have it back on discussion at the next meeting with their, unless you have to.
I know, I might.
We can approve our end, I guess, they just have to approve their end.
Yeah, you know, April 4th is that deadline for the grant.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and approve it with those changes then.
So can we move it to action tonight?
Sure. Yeah, we can move it to action.
I mean, we're looking at April 4th.
They still have, they still have to approve.
We're looking at a lot of money.
Okay, all right.
And if for some reason River Street has a change that's just really different than what we have in here, we'd have to bring it back to you on the 28th to.
That's what, that's what I'm wondering about.
But if they don't have it, they're good with it, we could sign.
And we're good.
They can go ahead and start back.
Okay, all right, that's item F.
That's it, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're good.
I thought you were going to give me a Jimmy Walker speech, so.
Through the whole point, that's not easy watching.
Do you reckon he's watching? If he is, he'll call you tomorrow.
He's got another stroke if he is.
Another question real quick, if they need to be working on that funding application, does this have to be all final signed on both sides before they're allowed to do that or can they be doing it anyway?
Well, I think you've picked them as your provider to do it, so I'd say they could go ahead and get started. One thing I did learn from NCDIT when I talked to Glenn the other day is that NCDIT's not really fully prepared to accept the applications yet and they do on April the 4th. I'm not really sure how that's working out, but so they'll be okay, I think, if we, yeah.
I think go ahead and start working.
But you've accepted them.
If they're willing to, if they're on red.
Yeah, you've picked them as your provider, so there's no reason they couldn't go ahead and.
All right, well, tell them to get started.
Could you clarify one other thing, Shannon? What's NCDIT going to be doing as far as administering this? They're going to be, they're going to be contract administrator for it or?
They're doing everything with the grant, they're holding, they are the administrators of the money, the funding came to them directly, so you're applying for the grant through them and their office is deciding who receives the grant, how much funding that you get. They're actually, they're monitoring that.
Oh, okay, okay. That's all I have.
All right, okay, we'll move to action. Item A is surplus property of Town of Onocove. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The revisions to the policy for fire commission and use of service district funds, which we discussed at the last meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I just clarify that's the budget amendment number, is that the one that says A3? Just to make sure.
No, I thought a budget A3 was the ESO reporting software.
You're right, yeah, that's the episode, yeah. Too much fire commissions.
All right.
Yeah, so C, C is going to be 83.
That's next. Okay, so item C is the ESO funding reporting software, which is budget amendment number 83. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. D is the refinancing of the Nancy Reynolds and the community college loan.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item E is the security fees for the courthouse.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And River Street contract, motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Harry's, we are adjourned. No closed session.
No.
[coughs]